I just want to call to order the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee here on Wednesday, September 28, 2022, in the Abington Middle High School library. I just ask if everybody first could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I would like to first ask anybody here, would they like to speak? If you would, just one at a time, come up to the podium and state your name for our minutes.
My name is Jamie Penola. Janie, my address too.
I don't think so.
Okay. So I'm sure that you're all aware that there was an inappropriate book found in the library. I found a bunch more yesterday. I don't think it's anybody here, like, you know, doing this, but I just want to call attention to it, to all of you who are here. It's pretty disturbing. I actually have some passages I was going to read, and now that I'm up here, I'm kind of too embarrassed to read them. It's just, as a parent, very disturbing to think that our kids could open a book from the library at school and see graphic content of sex, rape, incest, how to do the sex, how to use a sex app. Well, I'm sorry, my mind is just like going crazy this week. I just wanted to call attention to it. I'm sure you guys know, but I felt the need to say something as well. I know that there has been, I know that these books are on lists recommended for the schools to get from, you know, professional agencies that you've all trusted up until now. So again, I know that it's not anybody here, but it's extremely disturbing. I've got 10-year-olds in the school, not that I'd want my 14-year-old seeing this stuff either, but I really strongly suggest putting some kind of policy in place and reviewing any book that gets brought into any of the schools. Because I didn't see any in the elementary schools. I don't have kids there now, so I don't know, you know, if I would even be allowed to look. But I've seen them in other schools, which brought my attention to this to begin with and why I was kind of doing my search in the first place. So I just really, really strongly suggest that something be put in place for this. I'd be willing to donate my time to help or get a squad of parents to help because I know that, you know, who's going to be able to read every book that you want to put in the library. But clearly, we cannot trust these lists that are coming down from wherever they're coming down from, which I do intend to find out where they're coming from and go directly to those agencies because this is like porn in our libraries and grooming our children, and I am not okay with that. So that's it.
So to answer your question, to get to your first question, we are aware of one of the books that was pulled. We are aware of that. Regarding the rest, I know there have been discussions. I'm going to defer to Mr. Schaefer to help answer the questions better than I probably can. Regarding policies, we do have a policy subcommittee within here, so we can meet to discuss certain policies or be up to that committee to decide how to prolong that, but we do have that. So, Mr. Schaefer, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so Jamie, I appreciate the communication that we've had around this and, you know, the start of the year. And, you know, you were part of those and you worked with us on that. There was a book here that made the committee aware of that. And by policy, and it's posted on our website, you can, it's under the School Committee tab. You'll see a whole policy manual. Under my authority, I did pull that book.
Yes, no. And I do want to say that everybody was very proactive with this.
And I just, maybe I should probably be careful how open I am about this, but I'll share with you that I think the majority of the book was appropriate, but there were sections in the book that I felt made it not appropriate for this library. And that book isn't here anymore. Then there were other books that are on the list, and people can have access to those lists to see what we have available. To tell you where each one of the books comes from, there are so many different recommended lists. It's best to actually take that book and then find out who was recommending it. And you're right, that was a highly recommended book. There are other books with other content that there's a process for. And if there's something that jumps out at us, that's, you know, something that maybe not everybody would agree should be here or not, but if there's something, you know, if we look at it, that we can talk about and we get a good view and mutually agree that that book doesn't have a place here, that can also, that can also be removed. However, there is a, there's a process for the community, for parents, if they see a resource that they're uncomfortable with, and it's all online right now, by which they can request that something be considered formally. There's, I think the informal process is a very productive way if it's something that stands out. But if it's nothing that stands out, then I think it's important to follow a more formal process so that it can be appropriately vetted by a group of people rather than have small people say, I like this or I don't like that. And so the places that we get our materials and our resources from are from recommended sources. And there's going to be a wide variety of opinions about the content. And what we try to do in this library is we try to make sure that the content for older students, for their high school students, is separated from content for younger students because there's obviously a difference between the age groups. But I would bet, and I think I said this to you in one of our conversations, there, you know, we agreed on that book, but I bet you there are going to be other books that we're not going to see eye to eye on with different members of the community. And so there's a process for those materials to be considered. And I want to make sure I honor different opinions. I want to honor free speech. I don't want to go down a road of censorship without having, like I said, a group of people talk about those things in particular that people find they believe should or shouldn't be here.
Can I say something?
Do I have to hear all those questions? Do I hear them all?
Yeah, yes.
I don't want any group that would sit there and allow a book about rape in our middle school. Well, I'm like, can't even believe in this conversation. I would love to be a part of this committee because anybody that would agree to that shouldn't be in this middle school. I'm like...
Well, I feel like if I did read what I found in some of these books, we would agree. I can't guarantee that everybody would, but I hope everybody would. I'm so, my mind is blown by, and it's not the entire book, you know? It's not the entire book. It's pieces here and there and here and there, but it's like, oh my God, like, or if you... I'm sorry if I'm taking up too much time.
It's okay, Jamie. I would just, I would just ask you not to read it here just because the public...
I don't want to.
If you want to bring it to Mr. Schaefer, you can share it with us.
Share it with you at another time. I don't want to read it. I was going to, but I'm still over it.
Our kids get to read it.
So and there's a process by which we can, if people feel something shouldn't be there, we'll talk, we'll talk about all those resources. That's, that's the policy that we have in place, democratically put in place by the committee that I serve.
I get it, but like, so we didn't know about this? So the committee, whoever is on this, has already had access to look at these books? And, you know, if you, if you have, how many books did you find today? Eight books?
There was 23.
23 books today? So out of 23 books, that's 23 books in this library. Do you know what I mean? That'd have to do with like words that I was going to say.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't want to get into the argument here, but like, everybody's going to have their own opinion on what is valid and what isn't. And I respect, Jamie, I respect your opinion. Wendy, I respect yours. I didn't see them, so I don't, I don't have an opinion on it right now, but I just don't want to call it what it is right now, if it's more opinion-based at this point.
Yeah, I mean, it needs to obviously be further looked into. I just want to call attention to it, make sure everybody's aware, and I'll be more than happy to share. I have a, well, it's a lot of work, so I've been busy the past two days, but I can, you know, mark pages and tell you where to look. I know I can, you know, me handing you a paper and telling you what's in it, you know? You can believe me or not, but if I say, okay, page 29, you know, read this.
Yeah, and I, I think you've already worked with Mr. Schaefer, right? So I mean, I, I can say, continue to work with him in the time, for the time being, and then...
Absolutely. And I'm not saying that we're necessarily going to agree on all of the books.
Correct.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
If you take some of those passages and you, and you read them in the context of what, what story is about or what the author is conveying, I think that's why you need a wider group of people to... There's a process, and that's what the process is, to review those materials that a member of the community finds objectionable, so to look at those materials.
I have no problem with that. I would want everyone to read it if their kid is going to read it, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Can I, if you want, if you would like to speak, can I ask you to come to the podium? Please speak your name.
If we can move on, I have another, I have another pressing issue. I'd like to bring...
Can I ask if you just please take me for a minute?
Mike McDonald, 3 Pinecrest Road. You know, my concern right now is really for the children, it's come, you know, the gender confusion that is going on and the direction that I see, you know? Just, just in, you know, from what, all I can tell is that if somebody is confused, a young person is confused, there is, they cannot alert their parents. You're not allowed to alert their parents via whatever laws are in place. So it appears as though they're funneled directly into the GSA, which is Gender or Used to Be Transgender Gender and Sexuality Alliance, which is run by Ms. Daisy. I don't know her qualifications, I have no idea. And then the recent, the new one, it's GEM, which is Gender Empowerment Missions. Club is currently structured to empower female, identifying students with members across the gender spectrum. Figure that one out.
I want to certainly listen to everything that you have, but there are, there are so many things that you're saying that by point by point, I'd like to just...
I'd like to hear from you because you put this in.
Can I, with respect, because I want to hear all of those, those things, but I think one of the things you said was that by law, we drive children towards the LGBTQ or towards GEMS or...
Like, I can't figure out...
So what, what we try to do is we try to get that child to, we talk to the child about talking to their parents. So the family is aware and they hear it from their child because that's the healthiest way for a family to have those discussions. Now, the LGBTQ after-school club program that you've mentioned is available to anybody that wants to come and be a part of that meeting. It's not, it's not where we send, you know, that's where we drive people that are questioning or want to support other people. It's a, it's a club where people can talk and feel comfortable having conversations about how they feel and support others in that.
So in the absence of them not wanting to speak to the parents? Because maybe that's possible, that most children wouldn't want to do that, right? So in the absence of that, would we give them many options? Would we give them, say, hey, you know, maybe give them the other, another avenue to go, you know? Where they can control, you know, that they're in a hormonal state or maybe they need, need some other help, right? So that's, that's my concern because I think, I think that, you know, I think in this day, like, we, parents deserve to know what's, what, what the process is.
Yep, and we work hard because it's best for the child to have that conversation with, with the parent. And so we work hard to get the child to have that conversation with the parent. We've got kids who have these feelings and they can sometimes involve themselves in being self-destructive and commit suicide. And, and we want to really be responsible, and it is the law in terms of how we deal with this and the confidentiality. That's why it's so important for us to work with the child, to talk with their family, so their family can work with, be with their child and, you know, process as a family.
I think 600 times or six times more likely to commit suicide if they're transgender, right? So they get, so my concern is that we're not getting enough transparency on what's going on. And I think I, you know, Ms. Daisy and Ms. Wakeland, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to hear. I'd like to see, I'd like to see what's going on.
We're not, we're not here to question any...
No, I know. But their qualifications, right? Because this is, this is a mental, this is, this is also mental health, right? Because not everybody, not everybody going down that road is actually, you know, there is confusion, right? So with pre-hormonal kids, right? So we're not addressing, we're not addressing, in my opinion, the needs.
They're well-respected, certified adults in the lives of children that do a good job every day with kids. And we are not driving people to these organizations. These are places where kids talk and feel safe and comfortable. And...
Yeah, I mean, I still maintain I want to have a parents' group. I think we, you know, they need to know, the children need to know that their love for who they are as a boy and a girl, right, created. And there is, there is, you know, I feel it's, it's not, it's just not being relayed to parents. I just, I really do.
I've tried to explain to you the process.
I know, I know, and I appreciate that. But, but I, I think it should be kept up, and I think we need to, we need to continue to lay that out, you know, when you come, when we do these things, when we come out and we say, you know, at one time, we say, we see, you know, female identifying students with members across the gender spectrum. It's like, you want to confuse, you want to confuse the kids? It's like, is that what we want?
No, we're not trying to confuse. I don't think we're trying to confuse anybody. Mr. McDonald, this isn't, this isn't, excuse me. This isn't the setting for the back and forth either. So I definitely appreciate you coming and providing all the insight, and we'll take, like, we can take, and Mr. Schaefer can take the information. I definitely invite you, like I told Ms. Penola, anything, anything further that you think he may be able to drive down to, I'm guessing these conversations are high school, middle school, for the most part, to any of the principals there can definitely do. We can't, we're not able to make the policy right on the spot.
I get it. I made my point, and I just want it to be on the topic of mine.
I appreciate you coming and talking.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay. Thank you both. Moving on, reading an approval of records. We have the minutes from our August 31 meeting here. I'd be looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the committee once you get a second to look.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
All in favor? Up next, report of the Director of Curricular Instruction. Dr. Boss, I'm going to defer to Mr. Shannon to present on the music department update.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity again this year to address the committee directly. I think this is a great opportunity. In all my years, this is, it's just, it's nice to know the committee is invested in all areas of what's happening in the schools, including our music program, so thank you. We are, so we've been asked to sort of give an update on our presentations from last year and sort of where are we now this year and what are other strengths and challenges and things like that? So here we are. We were able to add a point two position to our music staff because of increased classrooms at the grade three and four level at the Woodsdale. Our AMS scheduling here for grades seven and eight primarily allowed for our instrumental and vocal experts to be in the band, in front of their band and chorus specifically. So that's really, really helped us this year in terms of having our vocal specialists with our chorus kids and our instrumental specialists with our band kids. And that's something we really are embracing and hoping we can maintain in the years ahead. And our numbers continue to grow in most areas of our curricular program. Our numbers, the first three columns are from last year's numbers, and I've added this year's, I have a little bit of an update. Oh, looks like Mr. Boston might have updated that one. Thank you. He's got my back. There you go. We are, our fifth grade students just had their instrumental rental meeting this last Wednesday, and we have really good numbers. One of our challenges, though, as Mr. Lee Nelly has pointed out to me, is we were a little concerned that the economy and some of the inflation that's happening might have been, you know, deterrent for some students and families to rent instruments. A lot of students did, some have their own instruments, but we're looking to grow an opportunity where we're able to maybe have some school-available instruments for students and families who might be in need or have some financial need there. So that's something, an area that we're going to continue to explore and work on in terms of instrument donation programs or other donations and from throughout the community. So that's an area that we want to keep an eye on. We've been able to maintain our numbers from grade six, grade five to grade six this year. Our grade seven and eight band has grown a little bit, so our retention is stronger coming into this year due to the good work that Mr. Lee Nelly and Mr. Blanchett are doing. Our other numbers are sort of maintaining. Our high school chorus numbers are a little lower this year. Our initial signup was strong, but we ran into some of our problems that we've discussed last year, and that was that we're running against other Singleton electives and AP courses. That remains a challenge for us in terms of getting those students who want to be in those classes to get them scheduled. So, so that's where we're at with our numbers. Some other strengths and other informational items that I just wanted to share with you. We have been confirmed for an SEL workshop. There's this group called Sing, Explore, Create out of Rockland. Nicole Craven is a certified musical therapist, and she sent us some information, and we were able to book her for our next December 13 departmental in-service meeting. So we're really excited to work on some strategies. And I think last year I had reported that SEL is really embedded in our content area, but this will be an opportunity for our staff to explore real concrete and apply some real direct methods into our daily instruction to really reach our kids from that level. Our marching band has increased from 17 members to 31 participants this year, so we're close to doubling our marching band. And again, we're hoping to just keep working those numbers up as we go through. And again, to the dedication of our marching band staff, Mr. Lee Nelly and Mr. Blanchett. Our music parents have donated up to, close to $16,000 to fund new marching band uniforms. And at this point, I'd just like to really thank Mary McGuire and Melissa Manley, who are our co-presidents of our music parent organization. So we'd like to thank them publicly for their donation and really supporting our work. The music parents, we ran a very successfully, one of our most successful craft fairs in recent memory this past Sunday, again, to the credit of our hard-working parents and student groups. We are well underway for our plans to New York City in April. We have confirmed our itinerary, students are in the process of signing up for that. And then we are running all our co-curricular offerings at both the middle school and high school at pre-pandemic level. So anything that might have not run due to certain circumstances during the pandemic, we are back full horse in offering all those same things or increased offerings at the middle school level as well. We are working on our, currently, I've got a rehearsal going right now for our fall play. We're doing the Play That Goes Wrong, which is a play within a play comedy. And we'll be doing Carry the Musical in March. And then Mr. Lee Nelly and Mrs. Beckhold will be working on the middle school musical production for May deadline. And again, our after-school clubs will be starting. This is the new marching band uniform. I wanted to share that with you. It's a really sharp and crisp look. We're not doing the shako, which is the march, the traditional marching hat with the plume. We figured that was just a little too much, but we really are very thrilled with this new design, very contemporary, very 2022. And I think it really sort of speaks to the direction. We want to take the program with a nice clean look, so when you see the band out, when they, these should be delivered, I think in the December time. So next time after December, we see our band out in public, they'll be wearing some crisp, new, shiny outfits. So we're really excited about that. Let's see here. So areas for growth that we see, that we want to continue to pay attention to our scheduling of high school band and chorus classes, as they often run opposite these Singleton and other AP courses. It's something we've had active conversation around. People are doing their best to accommodate student requests as best we can, but it just, it just warrants constant attention and attention to those matters. Same with our middle school scheduling, that we want to really keep our vocal specialists with our singers and our instrumental specialists with our instrumental students. We'd love to see an increase in instructional minutes. We were able to get that additional point two. There would be great value in increasing our instructional minutes at K to four level from our 30 minutes that they get once a week to anywhere more than that would be great. We just think that's valuable time at those young ages to really get them involved, not as performers, but just really how music-making and participating in music really helps with the whole students at that age and their developmental stages. And then again, my last piece here is just that I'd love to see continued conversation around the needs of our K to 12 music department need as part of an overall district sort of vision for the success and growth and sustainability of our music program. You know, sometimes we feel like we're in our own content areas, not just in music. Sometimes we feel like we're on our own island, and I would like to see that, you know, as we move forward, that the music program is sort of that, part of that overall vision for the district. And I think that's all I have. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
I have a couple. Is there anyone who wants to go before me?
I do have a comment.
Sure.
If that's okay. It's great to see the numbers go up. That is tremendous in the retention of the numbers that we already had going forward. One of the things I noticed, my social media feeds blew up last week and the week before, and it seems like I know people from outside of this community who, on their instrument rental nights, they almost treat it like an athletic signing day. So the kids in front of the signs like, look, who signed on to play whatever. And I just thought that could really be a fun thing for our families too, just to kind of, you know, have the kids take the picture, you know, do the thing. And that could also be kind of a fun way to drive. If we make it as big a deal as we really know it is, then hopefully these kids will be inspired to keep going.
I'll share that with Mr. McDonald.
Steve, I just had a couple, more comments, I think, too. And first off, I just want to echo to thank you, Ms. McGuire and Ms. Manley, for helping run the craft fair. It was really, really busy, at least for the first couple hours of it.
It was.
So thank you very much. And a couple of quick things, and I'm sorry, I just, I don't know the answer. So the point two position, was that a new hire or was just added to an existing?
It was sort of a, an added position because we have a point six at the Beaverbrook, and we were able to increase it to the point two to accommodate the additional fourth grade classroom. The way it worked out was that our, our K to two specialist is still at the Beaverbrook, three days, and we were lucky enough to find Kristin Lewis, who is a former Abington music teacher from back in the early 2000s, who is a point eight in her district in Cohasset and was able to come in and fulfill that point two position on Friday. So we were very lucky to get her back into our staff.
Gotcha, and I guess more, going, go ahead.
And it probably should have been a point three because we also had to add a fourth grade, increase sections. And, you know, I want to thank you, Steve, for working so hard to make sure that we're able to cover everything, even though it was a point two instead of a point three.
Thank you.
Stephen, I guess staying with the elementary. So you said to increase instructional minutes in grades K through four. How long is it now? And I guess what would you be looking to do? What's your ideal?
Our current schedule is 30 minutes for music classes. And I think just, and there's tons of scheduling challenges in every building.
Right, I get you.
Terms in moving students, especially at that, at that age level is tough, you know? But sometimes we just feel like that we don't, we're not getting the value of the full 30 minutes of instructional time because some of it's transitional time, things like that. We'd love to see it, even if it was able to bump to 35 minutes, sort of would at least cover some of those transitions.
The last one I had was, I guess I thought the marching band was the high school band? So that's not one and the same?
That's correct. So we have our concert band, which is our curricular program, and the students receive course credit for that in the high school schedule. And the marching band is a co-curricular program that we run voluntarily. Kids are, we have some eighth grade students participating as well. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I just have a question between the point two and the point three. So to the woman that came from the other town, did she take over? Did you have to go in and work those hours to make up for the...?
She started the year, she started with us at the beginning of the year, so...
But as a point two, but you said that at the fourth grade, they had to add, and it's true, it's a point three?
It's tight, yeah. She's pretty much maxed out for the day, yeah. Not a lot of wriggles, but we were able to manage it.
Thank you.
When I mean tight, people are, you know, stressed and on the fly and trying to cover everything, so...
Thank you for doing that.
Steve, thank you. Thank you for presenting. I appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Can I thank the music parents for the donation of the uniforms? Can I thank Steve and the music department for having people to put in the uniforms who are excited about participating in the band, looking forward to the drama productions? And, you know, I know you have that conflict with other classes for the choral program, or otherwise those numbers would be, you know, larger.
Yeah, the initial sign, the initial signup was close to twice that. And it just shows that, again, the challenges that we face when it comes to scheduling and students and families have to make choices over what they feel is best for themselves.
It's good to be a small district, but it's hard to be a small district and offer as much as we do and then try to accommodate everything in that framework.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
So like sports, they practice hockey before school and, you know, certain sports after school. Is there a way that, I mean, I'm not trying to cause any issues here, but just like a thought to move it to before or after school with the compensation?
but just like a thought to move it to before, after school with the compensation?
I've had some conversation with that, with Mr. Born around that. The other thing we're able to do is students are able to utilize the bridge block for that purpose. So if they weren't able to schedule the class, but they're invested in wanting to perform, so we'll, we'll schedule them during our bridge block period so they can learn the music. I add that to my Canvas class. They have access to practice tracks and the music that way. So it does, you know, so we were able to get a handful of the kids to at least, you know, keep up on their singing through the year. So.
Thanks, Steve. Up next, something I think we're all going to be excited to hear about again for the first time in three years. Mr. McCurran for consideration of an out-of-state field trip to Philadelphia for the Abington Middle School grade eight students in June of twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Chris. I am very excited to bring this to you tonight. It's a great opportunity for our kids. So tonight I'm asking you for your approval of a field trip to Philadelphia, June eighth to June tenth, twenty-twenty-three, for our grade eight students. This is a field trip that we had run consistently up until the pandemic began, and we are just excited to bring back again. We'll be working with Grand Classroom, who is the organization that is working with Abington High School around their trips. So all the policies and procedures are similar to what you would have already heard about those trips last spring. This trip is tied very closely to our history curriculum at all grade levels, but specifically in grade eight, tied very closely to civics and the birth of our democracy and what students are currently learning about in their classrooms. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have or give you some more details about the trip. I know you have an itinerary, a closed itinerary in front of you as well as a field trip plan sheet from me.
Matt, is it, what are the days of the week it runs?
So students leave on a Thursday morning, and then we return Saturday night. Yep, a lot of volunteer hours by staff members and opportunities for parents to take part as well.
Okay, thanks. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. McCurran?
I just have a question. Is that, that's different from past years? Right, is it, was it still always the Thursday to Saturday?
It always was. Yep. We actually looked at opportunities for other trips, but they all added a fourth day. So students were returning Sunday night around ten o'clock. Staff who volunteered to go would be gone till Sunday night around ten o'clock return and then be back in Monday morning. So coming out of the pandemic and looking at what we were very comfortable with before, what people were really looking forward to and weren't able to do, this was an easy choice for us to make. So the cost of the field trip is seven hundred twenty dollars per family. That's a little bit elevated. That's due to inflation and all of those things. There are some built-in protections for families. The TRP, which is the travel insurance that this organization works with, is a thirty-five dollars built into the cost. That allows families to cancel their plans for the trip up to one week in advance and receive everything except that travel insurance and the fifty-dollar deposit back. The TRP plus, families can choose that option, and that option would provide them a cancellation opportunity up to twenty-four hours prior to the trip. If approved tonight, we would have a parent information session on October eleventh at six-thirty, and I'll be ready to communicate that first thing in the morning.
If the trip had to be canceled after bid, because, you know, another thing like COVID happened, would people still lose out on that deposit? Or is there something, if the school decides that the trip has to be canceled, would that deposit be refunded?
So my understanding is the deposit is non-refundable. They do include language about what they call acts of fraud, things like that. But that fifty-dollar non-refundable deposit is put in there because the company is making plans with hotels and buying tickets.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do have. Just what, I know they've run this in the past. What's the percentage of students that generally, historically speaking, would go?
Great question. Somewhere between seventy and eighty percent on any given year, in my experience, is what students have been able to go. We have opportunities, and we'll talk about it at the parent night, for students that require financial assistance. There's a lot of fundraising that happens. Our PTO has always been incredible in the past. I know, I talked about this on our last PTO meeting. I know they're ready to support us and help us with fundraising. The businesses, the local businesses and organizations, the Lions Club, they've all been incredible about offering us some donations to help with families in need.
Okay, well, that was the other half of my question, so thank you.
Just a quick question in the past. I think Mr. Regalbudo had been involved with the trip.
I'm not letting him get away.
You are the point of contact on this?
I am the point of contact on this. Mr. Regalbudo will be there on the parent night. He will be with us on the trip. He is our resident Philadelphia expert. And when I agreed not getting his way of going to Abington High School, this was a condition I set with him privately.
Just curious. Thank you.
Does Mr. Born know this, or is he just finding out right now?
Mr. Born is aware. We've had discussions and we're in negotiations, but I think we should be all set.
Anybody else have anything? I think I know where this is going to go, but I'll be looking for a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip to Philadelphia for the Abington Middle School grade eight students from June eighth to the tenth, twenty-twenty-three, as presented by Mr. McCurran.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. McCurran. Up next, we're going to go to the Director of Student Services, Dr. Robbins. For the committee, I made a quick change because there was something in the information section that we wanted James to do. So it was the correspondence on equity that was probably in the back of your packet. He's going to lead off with that before he does the homeschool requests.
All right, great. Thank you, Chris. Thanks, all. Yeah, so the document that Chris is referring to is essentially a report card from DESI. So DESI has a few indicators, which they use to measure each school district's progress on serving historically marginalized populations. So it's the Equity and Special Education indicators. And so what DESI does is it reviews our performance on three, on three characteristics of our special ed program. First, it looks at the data to see if we're over-qualifying individuals for IEPs. Second, it tries to determine whether or not we're putting kids with disabilities in more restrictive settings than they ought to be in, you know, so in rooms away from their general peers. And third, it seeks to measure whether or not we're suspending or expelling students with disabilities at a higher frequency than the typical population. So those are the three performance areas that DESI is measuring. In addition to just students with disabilities, it also analyzes the data to see if, if we're, if students from certain racial and ethnic backgrounds are being over-identified for special education, educated in more restrictive settings than they ought to be, and expelled or suspended at higher frequency than the typical population. So that's what, that's what this analysis is all about. And essentially, just the document that's in the informational section is just showing, is essentially just sort of a clean bill of health, so to speak, but in fine disproportionality or in any of the measured domains. So that's a quick summary. Can I answer any questions about that?
So the not identified, not flagged is all good news?
Yeah, yeah, it's a funny document because, you know, it's positive, but everything is written as a negative.
Got it. Double negatives, right?
Exactly.
No, I mean, it's great. I mean, great, great work. Continue. I don't have any, I don't have any questions about it, though. Great. Also, James, thank you.
Great. Thanks for asking about it. And then, and then secondly, I'm up here just for, sort of for a routine reason. So there were, there were a few additional homeschool requests that came in after our, I believe it was August twenty-seventh, school committee meeting. So I've reviewed those applications. All of the curriculum that's been proposed in the homeschool programs meets the state criteria. And so I'm reporting to you as the committee to let you know that the applications in front of you have met the state criteria, so I turn it over to you as to whether or not you'd agree to approve those applications.
I think everybody has it, right? So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the additional home education programs for this school year as recommended by Dr. Robbins.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Any, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, James. Report of the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Schaefer.
So what I have for you is information for you about a program called Be Smart. And Caroline and Mary are going to provide you some more information about it, but I want to sort of tee it up for you. Years ago, we used this information, and Caroline and Mary came to me and said, we'd like to work with this again and this information and get this out there to people. So what this is about is, this is not pro-gun, this is not anti-gun. This is about information about lock up your guns. And it's the law and responsible gun ownership. So really, in terms of whatever side of the issue of guns someone might be on, I would think this is a good thing. Because if you are a responsible gun owner, I'm sure you're frustrated by people that don't act responsibly with guns. And if you are not a responsible, and if you are not a gun owner, you would appreciate that people would, who own guns, have them locked up and safe. So I don't know that there's anything here that many people would object to. It's an information campaign. It's a national campaign. The plan is to distribute this information to the community just about being responsible about gun ownership. You know, there are, there are kids that are raised in homes with guns, and you hope that their parents teach them the importance of being responsible about that. But then you've got a child that isn't raised in a household like that, and they play together. And so how does that work out when there's such a high curiosity around guns? And it's in video games and on TV, and kids are obviously drawn to them. And so this is to help make sure that, you know, you'll never know what tragedy you might prevent with a program like this. This has the support of the police department, and there are plans in the works to do a cable show on this. And I want to thank Caroline and Mary for partnering in this and helping, you know, launch this off the ground. And before any of this took place, we wanted to make sure that the committee knew. And, you know, it's a public meeting, and the public knows just what this is about. So that's, and this is something.
Whenever you're ready, you can start.
Thank you, Peter, and thank you, the committee, for having us tonight. We all want to keep our children safe. The issue of gun violence has instilled fear in parents and educators, and we know that no community is immune from gun violence. But we can take action together to help keep our children and our schools safer.
Guns are an emotional, often polarizing topic, and we all may come from different backgrounds, but surely we can agree on these ideas, that we all want kids to grow up happy and healthy, and that if we can prevent even one child gun death or injury, it is our responsibility to do so.
The Be Smart campaign raises awareness about responsible gun storage and emphasizes that it's an adult's responsibility to keep kids from accessing guns. The framework is designed to help parents and adults normalize conversations about gun safety and take responsible actions that can prevent child gun deaths. Its message is geared to both gun owners and non-gun owners. In a few minutes, we'll tell you more about Be Smart.
But first, here's why we think it's so important to promote Be Smart. Here's what the research says about children and gun violence. According to recently released CDC data, in the U.S., firearms are now the leading cause of death for all children and teens. In addition to the deaths, six thousand more minors are injured every year, causing devastation of their lives and huge costs to society. Also, every year, three million children witness gun violence. We know that children exposed to violence, crime, and abuse are more likely to abuse drugs and alcohol, suffer from depression, anxiety, and PTSD, and fail or have difficulties in school. We should not underestimate this impact on their lives and on our communities.
Unintentional shootings by minors are another area of concern. Nationwide, in two thousand and twenty-one, there were at least three hundred and ninety-two unintentional shootings by children. No story of these tragic losses is quite the same, but all stories are devastating and all are preventable. These are not accidents. Most unintentional gun deaths among children occur in or around the home, involve guns that are loaded and accessible, and occur when children or teens play with or handle the gun. With the recent surge in firearm sales, we must raise awareness of such tragedies even more than ever.
We should also talk about children and suicide. In two thousand and twenty, gun suicide among children ages seventeen and under reached the highest rate in over twenty years. Over eighty percent of minors who die by gun suicide use a gun accessible to them from their own home or that of a family member. A national youth survey conducted by the CDC in two thousand and seventeen showed that seventeen percent of high school students surveyed had seriously considered attempting suicide within the last year. And another study around the same time showed that forty-one percent of adolescents in gun-owning households reported having easy access to guns in their home. These situations provide a recipe for tragedy.
School shootings are on everyone's minds nowadays. Seventy-eight percent of school shooters under the age of eighteen obtained the guns from their home or the homes of relatives or friends where they were unsecured. According to the U.S. Secret Service, addressing student access to guns is a critical component of any school-based threat assessment plan.
There is no one solution for reducing gun violence, but there are many evidence-based solutions, including raising public awareness about secure storage. Over the summer, Every Town for Gun Safety released a comprehensive report on school safety. This report was co-authored by the two leading education members in the United States, the National Education Association and the American Federation of Teachers. The report includes a comprehensive set of evidence-based solutions to intervene and prevent school violence. And one of those key solutions is encouraging responsible gun storage. The study found that policymakers should encourage a culture of secure gun storage by increasing awareness of secure storage practices.
And this is where Be Smart comes in. The Be Smart campaign was developed to reduce the deaths, injuries, and traumas that result when children gain access to unsecured firearms. The program emphasizes that responsible storage is always the adult's responsibility and encourages individuals, gun owners, and non-gun owners alike to take five simple steps to keep kids and families safer. We will now briefly explain the SMART acronym.
S is for secure guns in your homes and vehicles. And the premise of this stuff is that kids are curious, and it's up to adults to prevent kids from gaining access to guns. Thirteen million households with children contain at least one gun, and the majority of children in those households actually know where the gun is stored. There are just a few more facts and statistics about safe storage. We also want to mention that secure storage practices are codified in our Massachusetts state laws. Section C, there it is. Right there. So that's why the police support us.
M is for Model Responsible Behavior. It is always an adult's responsibility to prevent unauthorized access to guns, not a curious child's responsibility to avoid guns. Talk to your kids about gun safety. We can't control the environment that a child is in all the time, so we want to teach them not to touch a gun if they come across one and give them the tools to get out of a dangerous situation and to alert an adult. As an adult, it's your responsibility to do everything you can to prevent them from getting in a dangerous situation to begin with.
A is for Ask About Unsecured Guns in Other Homes. As we've mentioned, there are approximately four point six million U.S. children living in a household with at least one loaded unlocked gun. And that's why Be Smart encourages parents and caregivers to ask about the presence of guns anywhere their child may visit. That includes the homes and vehicles of friends, relatives, babysitters and other daycare providers, and playmates. And Be Smart helps us normalize asking as part of a safety conversation. We might ask about pets, pools, and food allergies, and the presence of guns is just one more thing that we can ask about.
R is for Recognize the Role of Guns in Suicide. Firearms are the most lethal method for suicide attempts. The availability of a gun to a teenager in a moment of crisis can be the difference between life and death. The suicide rate among young people is at a record high with alarming increases every year since two thousand and seven, and this trend has only been exacerbated by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. There are multiple factors that can elevate the risk of suicide, including current life stressors and historical risk factors. And of course, action must be taken to address these root causes and to take care of students' mental health. But one thing is clear: lethal means of harm is a third risk, and reducing unsupervised unauthorized access by youth to firearms can significantly reduce that risk.
And finally, T is for Tell Your Peers to Be Smart. Your voice is critical, and by talking to friends and family about how to be smart, we can change the culture around responsible gun storage and save children's lives.
Be Smart is a nonpartisan and is neutral on the topic of gun ownership. It is, it does not encourage or discourage individuals from owning guns. It also does not advocate for changes to gun laws. Rather, it emphasizes the power of each and every adult to take agency over the safety of children and teens. There is helpful lifesaving information.
There is helpful lifesaving information for everyone, whether they own a gun or not.
Schools care about and have a vested interest in all aspects of student safety. Raising awareness about the lifesaving effects of secure firearm storage can be included in their safety messaging, just like messaging on substance abuse, internet safety, fire safety and more. This is one more proactive step that schools can take. And as you can see, some districts in Massachusetts and beyond have already committed to promoting Be Smart.
No community is immune from gun violence. As parents, educators and leaders in our community, we are all responsible for keeping our schools safe. By committing to be smart, we all can take an important step towards protecting our kids and our schools. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Caroline. Thank you, Mary. Does anybody have any questions to ask?
No, thank you.
I just wanted, yeah, I just want to mention too, for, it's a, will this flyer that we have go out to?
That was actually.
People, it's like at the very bottom, the very bottom of it, it does mention, um, if you don't have a gun lock, if you need a gun lock, there's a, a email address you could reach out to for a free one. So if this is going to go out to the community, if anybody needs one, um, there's an email address to reach out to. It's besmart.southshore.ma@gmail.com. So that was just the one tip that I was going to mention. So. Thank you both for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Up next, we're part of the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Michelle.
Thank you. I have in front of you the, believe it or not, FY24 Budget Development and Article Planning Schedule. We waste no time. So, uh, on there is a dates with when we'll be starting the process, which is in October and November. We'll present, uh, we'll have a subcommittee meeting in December and we'll present the preliminary budget in January. And then there's a series of meetings throughout the spring with, uh, school committee, finance committee, um, subcommittees. And then April town meeting has been set, uh, spring town meeting has been set for April 3rd. So, um, we have an early, an early town meeting again. Uh, well, it's, it's, uh, that's the date in the charter. So it's filed in the charter.
Anybody have any questions, Dr. Michelle?
No.
So with that in mind, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 School Department Budget Development and Article Planning Schedule as presented. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so under new business, so we're part of the Resolutions Committee. So on the first weekend in November, there is, um, the Masters Association of School Committees holds their, I'm going to mess something up in here, probably, holds an annual conference, um, in Hyannis. And as part of that, there are resolutions to be voted on. There are six resolutions. You all have them in, um, your packet. We're going to hold off on voting on that tonight because we have our October meeting before that. So it gives anybody a chance to look it over, how you want to do. We will vote these resolutions at the October meeting. Also then, and I know Wendy, you would express an interest, I think Heidi and Julie had expressed an interest in going. So somebody that's going, and Peter, I believe you said Wednesday is when they will.
November 2nd.
So November 2nd on the Wednesday is when these resolutions will be voted on. So of, if you're all going to be there on Wednesday or one of you going to be there on Wednesday, we'll need to appoint a delegate that will basically answer these resolutions as we vote them. If the three of you want, want to talk about, see who wants to do that, come back. Um, let, or let me know when I can appoint one at the meeting. If not, um, we, if multiple people want to do it, we may just do a vote like we do for, uh, Weorg. So that's the other option. We have a month, there's a month to talk about how we want to go about it. So we'll do it at that meeting as well as, uh, voting on the resolutions at the October meeting. I know I can't go because of work with Danielle. Guess I'm not going either, right? So, um, so that's kind of all I had on that. And there's nothing to vote on right now, but just an FYI for a month from now. Yep. Up next, the establishment of next meeting date. So we will vote on it on Tuesday, October 25th, 2022. It'll be here at 7:00 PM. Um, just some informational items, uh, 9/11 tribute service. I want to thank Hannah Terrell, Jack Regan and Charlie Hernandez. There's a, um, there's a handout in your packet. And Charlie is Heidi's daughter, for those that don't know. So thank you, Heidi, to your daughter. It was, it's, there's a memo in here on the tribute service that they did for the state on the anniversary of 9/11. I'm not going to read all, it is in the, it is in the packet. It's available online in our agenda for anybody that wants to go through it. Um, so just thank you again to Hannah, Jack and Charlie for all their support, all they've done and all they did to help out for the 9/11 remembrance. Um, there's also a Reads Collaborative Quarterly Report in there that anybody can read at their own leisure. I also, um, going on to dates to remember, um, at least as of right now, the next CPAC meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 5th at the Middle High School Library at 7:00 PM. All school buildings and school offices are closed on Columbus Day, Monday, October 10th. On the next day, Tuesday, October 11th, the Green Wave Boosters meeting is at the high school at 7:00 PM. On Wednesday, October 12th, um, there, I'm sorry, there's a Learning Expo at Woodsdale School at 6:00 PM. An email came out about that earlier this evening for grades K through four. On Sunday, October 16th, the Green Wave Boosters Annual Door-to-Door Drive from Abington Town Hall from 11:00 to 1:00 PM will take place. There's also been multiple emails sent out about that. And our next meeting is on Tuesday, October 25th as well. I did receive an email from the Abington Education Foundation today with, um, just asking if I could provide some information on something. So I'm just going to read off here really quick. Um, they're having a logo contest to update their logo. Submit to the email about afinformation@gmail.com. There'll be some more details coming out on social media and an email very soon, but just to get a heads up. Their next meeting is currently scheduled for Wednesday, October 12th as well at Town Hall at 7:00 PM. It's in one of the first rooms when you first walk into Town Hall normally. Um, they'll also have a presence at Abington Celebrates, I think their raffle wheel on Sunday, October 16th. Usually that date's out in front of the folio. Um, they're going to be hosting a meet and greet at 10th District on Sunday, October 23rd from 4:00 to 7:00. Um, there's a $20 donation suggested at the door. There'll be information coming out about that. And also finally, Team Trivia is coming back. For years, they hosted Team Trivia. It's been unable to be held the past couple of years due to restrictions. It's, they're planning to do it on the first Saturday in January, which is January 7th, which is the date it always was. So if anybody's interested, be on the lookout for information on that. And it used to be always hosted at the, the KFC on Hancock Street. I don't know if that's still the place, but that's where it always had been prior. Do you think, do you have anything, anybody have anything else?
I do have, I've noticed it seems to be a lot of Woodsdale parents have been talking about they're not getting the emails. Has there been, what's our recommend, just check your constant contact settings or?
No, I'm glad you brought that up. Something that happens is if you have a Yahoo account, for some reason Yahoo's particularly sensitive to putting things into, um,
Junk.
Junk spam or filtering in some way. We've noticed that it's, it's, it's more people that use Yahoo that don't get emails. And it's not just constant contact, it's emails from the district.
Yeah, it's anything from, I had it happen last year. It's anything, even from a teacher, they'll go in there and.
So we've had people like, why haven't you answered? It's like, well, we did, but we don't know when. And then they look in their filters and it's in Yahoo, it's in the Yahoo. It's just, we can't prevent, we can't control how particular Yahoo is. So people just have to be aware of it.
And the only other thing I will add to the Woodsdale is that they used to do a weekly newsletter. They switch it to bi-weekly. And I don't know what the schedule of it is. So that could be the reason people are used to weekly and it's coming bi-weekly now. So I just don't, I don't know if that's the answer, but that could be a possibility. And everybody gets too many emails surrounding the public schools anyway. Okay, that's good to know.
That's great to know. So it's worth people, A, checking their constant contact settings to begin with and then checking.
Their newsletter is usually on a Friday when they do send it. So that's, that's, that's any advice.
I think either Brooke, though, in Abington High School and the middle school, um, have their own, you know, it says it. Like I know that when something's coming from the high school and people.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
It just, it, so I think it's a combination of a couple of things, but one of them is, it's now, it's every other week. And it just seemed to be that's where a lot of parents were. And so I think we're looking at a, a few things that are.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Laura. If nobody has anything else, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.